Pledge of Allegiance, Lincoln Elementary, Mr. Millard.
Thank you, President Hayward. It's my pleasure to have Dr. Smiley move my microphone. Thank you, Dr. Smiley. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Sean Galvin, the principal of Lincoln Elementary. Dr. Galvin started working in the Janesville School District in 2010 and has been in education since 1999. Sean has taught 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, as well as being an elementary school assistant principal. Dr. Galvin has served as a camp director for seven years at a nonprofit Free Day Camp in the State Line area for at-risk youth. Sean has an associate's degree from Rock Valley College, a bachelor's degree from Rockford College, a master's degree in curriculum and instruction, and a master's degree in education leadership, both from National Lewis University, and most recently a doctorate in education at Edgewood College. Dr. Galvin, who do you have with you tonight?
I have Jamison, Eli, and Kendall, all 5th graders at Lincoln Elementary. And as we were talking, we discovered that all three of them have been with us since kindergarten, which is very important for us at Lincoln, to build that legacy of great role models and great behavior and great examples, as we have 50 to 100 of our students turn over every year in our student population. So having consistency like these guys is great to have at Lincoln and as leaders and as learners.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
All right, item 3.2, motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Audrey, seconded by Kevin Murray. Forgot who you were for a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes 6-0. Three commissioners are gone tonight. Safety message, Commissioner Millard.
Boy, some days you just can't get rid of me. Think safety as you enjoy the cooler temperatures and vibrant colors. Safety warm up by the fire, or I should say safely warm up by the fire. Never leave burning candles unattended. Watch the new roadway hazards. Be alert for wildlife on roadways. Share the road with harvesting equipment. Get the yard ready for winter. Use ladders safely and get a flu shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Student presenters, we have Grace Marota from Craig High School. Hi, Grace.
All right. Hello, hello, members of the school board. My name is Grace. Involved in Student Council, Link Crew, National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, many others. The following information is from the athletic department at Craig, and I was asked to share it with all of you. We have had a great increase in the number of athletes this fall season. So the amount of students registered for fall sports this year is 422 students, which is up roughly 54 students from last year. And the sports with the biggest increase in participants were football and volleyball. So this year, we have 145 students in football, and there were 113 last year. And volleyball this year has 92 students, and there was 69 in last year. We are so proud of all of our athletes at Craig and so proud of the amount of athletes that we have this year. On August 31st, our Craig Link Crew helped lead the freshmen through freshman day, where the freshmen were all separated into groups and led through some activities by the Link leaders to get them acquainted with others and help them learn their way around the halls of Craig. The Craig Girl Swim Team had a fundraiser on Saturday, September 23rd, called Splash for Cash. The swimmers invited their friends and family to swim on Saturday morning. And in order to swim, each person had to donate a certain amount of money. So it's a great way to fundraise. In preparation for homecoming, all clubs and sports at Craig elected nominees for homecoming court. Each club got one male and one female nominee, who were then placed on the ballot to vote for homecoming court. There were a couple rounds of voting, and then the homecoming king and queen were announced at our pep assembly on Friday, and they were George Green and Kate DeGraff. Each grade level at Craig decorated their respective hallways this past week for homecoming. And at the pep assembly, all of the games that are played, the class banners each grade level makes, and the hallways they decorated are taken into account and calculated to determine which class has won the assembly. And this year, it was the seniors, as it should be every year. But it was a close race with the juniors. The homecoming parade at Craig was Thursday, October 5th, at the end of the school day, where clubs, sports, and the homecoming court all go through the parade, displaying floats or just some school spirit. The homecoming football game was Friday, October 6th, where Craig played Verona at home, and the theme was, of course, school spirit. Many of our clubs at Craig have held their first meetings of the year and are encouraging new members, especially the freshmen, to get involved. Craig's parent-teacher conferences are this month. Conferences will be held Wednesday, the 25th after school, and Thursday, the 26th, the whole day. These conferences are available because it's the end of the first quarter, and parents may want to correspond with teachers about their child's grades and performance in classes. Craig will be having our first Hispanic Heritage Month Assembly tomorrow during advisory. This assembly will contain various musical performances, speeches, and dance numbers performed by students. And we're very excited to celebrate our Hispanic students and their culture at Craig. Thank you so much for listening, and I look forward to seeing all of you next month. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, Grace. Awesome. Thank you. We're glad to have you back. And also back by popular demand, Addison Riley Lean from Parker.
I'm gonna walk as fast as I can in these heels. Okay. Okay, hello, everyone. So my name is Addison Riley Lean, and crazy as it sounds, I am a senior now at Parker. Although most of you guys have known me since my sophomore year, I want to give you guys a quick introduction on who I am, just in case you forgot or you don't know me. At Parker High School, I keep myself pretty busy. I'm part of the varsity volleyball and varsity track and field team. I'm the president of our DECA chapter, the public relations officer for our Student Leadership Council, a member of Science National Honor Society and National Honor Society. I'm a Link Crew leader. I'm a Women's Empowerment Club member, the Viking Student Credit Union representative, and I'm the school board representative, which allows me to be here today. But besides all that, I keep it pretty low-key usually, right? So that's enough about me. I have lots of exciting Parker news to share with you guys today, so let's get into it. The top programmers from Parker and Craig teamed up during the summer to compete in the Kibo Robot Programming Challenge. The team consisted of Alex Cooper, Eva Schroeder, Kelsey Gunderson, and Ryan Hahn from Parker, and Kevin Duong and Noah Sukraj from Craig. The team finished in the top 10 in the United States, but unfortunately, only the top team moves on and gets to have its code uploaded onto the International Space Station and actually run robots in space. However, finishing top 10 in the United States is pretty good, in my opinion, so congratulations to all of them. The story behind the game was to have your robot go through the space station and fix air leak problems that the space station was having, which is actually, was actually ran last night. So the winning team ran their program in outer space last night. So that's cool. This year, Parker welcomes 15 international students from Bolivia, China, Germany, Japan, and Spain. These students arrived prior to the start of the school year and have a Parker student atmosphere. These students have brought a bright and knowledgeable form of diversity into our school. Parker DECA hosted an ice cream social to begin the school year with 75 members attending. Our leadership team outlined plans for the upcoming year regarding community service projects and competition. On Thursday, October 19th, 35 Parker DECA members will be assisting the Washington PTA in hosting Oktoberfest at Washington Elementary School. Over the last month and a half, Student Leadership Council has worked hard to plan the homecoming events that are occurring over the next week. This year's homecoming theme is Disco Fever, which I personally am extremely excited for. We Vikings have our fingers crossed for no rain this coming Friday for our annual homecoming parade. I want to personally invite all of you to watch our hopefully dry homecoming parade. This is by far my favorite event of the year, as it's a great opportunity for us to show our school spirit to the community. We love seeing the kids. We love throwing candy, so hopefully we're able to do that without getting drenched. So there's that. Parker is pleased to host the first semester of the Craftsman with Character Program. 14 Parker students are doing two-week rotations at local businesses in order to gain hands-on learning opportunities in the areas of various skilled trades. Participating businesses include JP Cullen, Rock Road, Blaine Supply, United Ally, Print Corporation, the City of Janesville, and the School District of Janesville. With help from Dave Haytag, founder of the program, students will gain instruction on character education, financial literacy with Black Hawk Community Credit Union, and programs available at Black Hawk Technical College related to training with skilled trades. On Monday, you are invited to attend the Fall Choir Concert at 7:00 PM in the Parker High School auditorium, including Aurora Choir, Viking Choir, Belcanto Choir, and Cantorum Choir. Finally, last I want to sincerely thank you for being a homegrown hero to all of us. You have continued to serve us, and we greatly appreciate. That's all I have to share with you guys today, but I look forward to seeing you all next month with lots more information to show, and I'm very excited to be back. So thank you.
We're happy to have you back.
Thank you.
And it is National Hunger Drummer Day, so it is basically Jim Millard Day, you know, essentially. All right. Thank you for those updates. That's great. We're glad to have all of you, both of you back. Any citizen comments? No, we have none. Okay. Consent agenda. Motion made by Audrey, seconded by Murray. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes 6-0. Thank you. Board items, 5.1, Ms. Perrinboom on the update on the Third Friday Count.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit more in depth about the Third Friday Count. This Third Friday Count comes from the Third Friday in September, which this year was September 15th. The count was officially due to the Department of Public Instruction on Friday, September 29th by midnight. Before I delve into the actual count, I want to provide you with some information about how we count students throughout the state. The state provides us with two different ways in which we can count a student. They need to either actually be in a seat on the count day, or they have to have attended at least one day before the count day, and then another day after the count date, prior to when the district has to submit the count numbers to the state of Wisconsin. So with that information, we had a count that was down by 121 students. If we look at grade bands, elementary was down one student from last year. Middle school was down 42 students from last year. High school, 39 students down, and our P4J enrollment was down 43 students as well. When we talk about count, where our funding truly comes from, though, is the membership enrollment. And that's a very complex formula in which not all students are necessarily given a full count. So our P4J students, for example, while we count them as a whole student for the count enrollment that goes to the state, different than a whole student. So with our membership count for this year, we were down 13 students versus the 121. Number for this year, we have 578 total students open enrolled in. We have 588 students open enrolled out, so we are at a net loss of 10 for open enrollment. In looking at our high schools, every single grade band has a net gain for open enrolled in. Elementary and middle schools all have a net loss, except for in sixth grade and first, or sixth grade and P4J, which had a net gain of one student. We reviewed where we're gaining or losing students to or from. We are at a net gain of 101 students from Beloit, 19 from Parker, 13 from Milton. We lose 22 students from Edgerton, 22 students from Merrill, and 48 students from McFarland. And the reason that we have those net losses to Merrill and McFarland is because those two districts are two districts that also have virtual programming in the state of Wisconsin, in which students can choose to open enroll out to. We also looked at the actual number of students enrolled. So we have our count, who is counted, because they met the count criteria. We compared that against actual number of students enrolled, and our enrollment is showing that we're very tightly aligned to the staffing plan that was done in spring of 2023. We are actually over all of our enrollment projections for all buildings, except for Rock University, where we are slightly down. So to put an example into perspective, last year at Edison Middle School, we staffed at 602 students. The actual enrollment there is 609 students, and the count for them was 596 students. At this point, I'd open up the floor to any questions or clarifications you may have.
Just one, the first school you said we lost students was Parker, but did you mean Parkview?
Parkview, yes. Orfordville, Parkview.
Thank you.
And actually, we gained 19 students from Orfordville, Parkview.
Oh, that was the gain. I'm sorry.
Yeah. We gained from Beloit, Orfordville, Parkview, and Milton, and then...
Not super-duper close. There's no virtual program there that...
There is not.
Okay. But maybe there's like a... All right. Thank you. Moving on to 5.2, Strategic Plan Update. Mr. Holsman.
Thank you. Want to just provide the board with an update. Since the last time we communicated, we had our first formal meeting. We had nearly 70 members from our community, our staff, that worked through a couple-hour process to talk a little bit about, well, we got to know each other a little bit, and then talk a little bit about what we value in our school district. We talked a little bit about mission, vision, and goals. And then we also had an opportunity to work through some areas of improvement. So each one of those processes took a little bit of time, had a lot of big post-it notes on the windows. We separated people into 13 tables, and so there were five or six of each table. And throughout the process, I saw lots of engaging conversation of individuals who were learning with each other and giving their ideas about how we might improve or make suggestions for that, what they most value. And then we generated some themes. I shared those documents with the board for your review, and we shared that information with our committees. We'll be meeting again two weeks from Monday, 23rd, thank you. We meet at Marshall, and again, I recognize that some of the commissioners are on the committee, but if anybody wants to observe, we have, I don't call it loosely, but an observation table where some of our directors who are presenting or just come back. So if you even want to stop by and just see what it looks like at any time, feel free. This next meeting on the 23rd, I will spend the day with our facilitator, and we'll be meeting at five middle and high schools to gain input from 15. We use the term up to 20 students from each group, selected, hopefully, a specific group from their administrators, to get feedback from them. And then we're going to bring that feedback to our group for just more input about what our kids feel about areas of strength, growth, and input. So we're anxious to put all that together. We'll have two, one in November on a Monday and one in December. And if we're complete at that time, we'll have... And if the commissioners who are on the committee want to add, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just share, I am, just so... How it went. It was very well-organized event. It was very productive. There was, you know, it just started. Things flowed really well. You know, I think it's really great to see so many engaged community members. It was a big room. So I just was impressed to see that. And, you know, of course, I was participating, but I was also observing the whole scene as well. And I'm just really pleased with how well everything was run and structured. And so I would imagine that our team would be really pleased with how we are starting with this process. So that's just kind of a little bit, a little blurb for me.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? All right. Thanks for all that great work and to the community for serving. All right, Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Update, Commissioner Audrey.
It's what it says.
So I have to crush out almost a two-hour meeting into five, because our meeting was just short of two hours. But we are, we dig in a lot of detail. So to go through a couple of the key items that we covered, the Boundary Line Committee reports to the Finance Committee. So the Boundary Line Committee had met right before our, the Finance Committee, and we reviewed the Roffers report that we had seen, and just talked about the flow of students and kind of where we're looking and things are projecting. So really, no change. It is interesting, over the years, the one school that is the most neighborhood school was these students every year. It is just still interesting that that is still the most neighborhood school, because the... Elementary school. So the, I guess the next item I will point to is, as we look at change with the windows and things there. My network will continue on into next summer. Lot of work being done. Can't be seen, because there are tunnels and things, really preparing for next summer, getting things ready there. As we look at what we're gonna, long-range planning, and we think strategic plan, we think long-range planning, and pulling it all together, December's going to be a heavy muff for everything to come together. We'll have a wealth of information from a strategic plan and a long-range facility plan. And once again, what is that? That is our architect, EUA, construction contractor, JP Cullen, civil contractor, point of beginnings, coming together, reviewing our facilities totally, and coming back with, here's what we think you need to be looking at. So that'll be a very comprehensive, I'll call it overview plan, because they won't necessarily go down to, well, you need to replace this light with this kind of light. It won't be to that level, but it'll be close. One of the highlights of the committee is, was from the, our Director of Food Service, Liz Lito, as we look at factoring in the wages of our food service workers and comparing them to what they could do elsewhere. And really highlighted the point of where we are today, where we used to be, and just highlighted the need of increasing pay within that group, so we can actually keep some of the food service workers. So that will still, that'll be coming as part of that Fund 50 budget. Responding to, I would say, the facilities need. That would be within the minutes for your review and for our discussion, as we look at overall budget. And then as we look at the important debt levy management. What we do today sets us up for the future.
That's rough.
Okay. What we did 16, 15, 16 years ago, we have some referendum and non-referendum debt. Really, if we prepay some of that now, it sets us up to have more available monies within our normal Fund 10 budget, to then really fully affect the educational environment, as opposed to paying on debt. So we're looking at some, I would say, acceptable ways of some prepayments. We've done this before, and we'll continue to look to spots to do that. We've done this before, and we'll continue to look to spots to do that. I think the only, and my last thought here is, as we look at the impact that the district has on the community with Bags of Hope and supporting of that, we're setting aside more money within the program for funding that, similar to what we've done with early literacy, and really looking at how to focus, to reallocate our staffing to be able to respond to really leading that program and others. So that'll be one other thing that we as a board can
Any questions? Thanks, Greg, we're lucky to have you serving on that, leading that committee.
A budget booklet for a review.
I suppose that's mine to answer. Okay, so finance will meet next Tuesday, and it's our intent to have that available for publication no later than Friday. And so we'll send out a copy, as we traditionally have, to the entire board. Keep in mind, right, we have a sentinel item that will be released by the Department of Public Instruction on Friday, right? And that is our final equalization aid amount, right? So even when we push out that document to the board and to the committee and to the public, it will change, right? So it's just important to keep that in mind. So there'll probably be a draft copy sent out, but then by the time Tuesday rolls around for the finance committee's consumption, we'll have solidified that number, right? It's a timing issue for us.
Thank you, I just have a couple asks as it relates to budget is, if I could get that printed out for me? It's tough for me to concentrate on the screen with that large of a document.
Absolutely.
And within the budget packet, is there like a cheat sheet that lists all the different funds and kind of what they are?
Yes.
Within that?
Abs- absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, yep, absolutely. We try not to use the word cheat in the business office just to, uh, but, but we will have a guide, a glossary.
All right, all right. As it relates, so, and then when we're, are we going to be asked for possible approval? Last meeting in October or first meeting in November? And when's the public hearing?
Yep, so I believe that, so those two things, sorry, I believe coincide traditionally in this district. Keep in mind, this is a as well as the board's consideration to approve the budget and certify the levy.
Directly related to, in my opinion, ask for three new positions. Manage Bags of Hope and Early Literacy. Another one is a project manager. And another one is additional grounds person, is that, that's
Sorry, there's vibration somewhere on the table, you are correct, yes.
So since the board hasn't had an opportunity to discuss those positions, we therefore, during our budget session, that's our opportunity now to voice our opinion on, well, anything within the budget, right? In particular, I'm focused on those three. So also then, will I have to like search for those things in the budget? Or there'd be like a executive summary that says, hey, hey Murray, here's some new things that you may want to check out, and this is, these are the things, or here's some of the things that we've eliminated, you know, so I don't have to
Yeah, yeah, I mean, all, all very fair question. So I think, you know, one, one of the items we try to do, right, is keep the committee, if you will, abreast, right? So there's no surprises to the committee, and then that information is shared out. Specific to your question, came I see you're frozen on the screen over there. Specific to that question, we do try, we do try to highlight, if you will, some items, right? So we don't necessarily break down how much we spend on post-it notes and photocopy paper and cleaning supplies and curriculum. But when there's a change, right? We really do try to highlight that, right? So it's, I think, important to us, you know, as administrators and specifically within the business services group, right, to where there are no surprises, right? And so we try to be transparent and call those things out.
Well, now that you mention it, those that were on that finance committee and you know, I don't care about post-it notes, but I do care about new positions and what it costs a taxpayer.
As, as do I.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all right, item seven. PPC overview, Commissioner Paul.
Well, Commissioner Audrey, I am very glad that you oversee your committee because thankfully, we do not need to meet for two hours. So I am very grateful for the time, energy, and efforts that you all invest in that. And we do try to keep ours to about an hour or less, sometimes that happens, sometimes it does not. This last meeting was a very informative, but not super long meeting. We had two key points of information that we discussed, and one was a professional learning community's overview, and it was wonderful. I'm going to give you a few highlights, but I would highly recommend, if you'd like to learn more about PLCs, to go back and watch that because it was really a great presentation. And for, in order for you to really understand, you'd need to watch the whole thing. It's, it's really good, though. So when we are using PLCs in our, our district, basically the premise is that teachers are working together toward common outcomes, which helps create better teachers and better learning environments for all students. So instead of teachers working individually and doing great things, we are all working together to share these great things in a collaborative process. And I, I think that's fantastic. So there are three big what, what is, the focus is changing from what is taught to really what is learned by our students, and I think that's pretty to do, how will we know this? What will we do when they don't know it? And then also, what will we do when they already know it? So I just like understanding what the main idea and, and, you know, what they're all looking at. We heard from two different schools that evening, which I always find really beneficial because not only are we hearing about these programs, but we're learning about them in, you know, real time from the individuals that are doing the work firsthand. Harrison and Parker came and spoke to us, and so we're really grateful to those principals. Harrison walked us through the evolution of PLCs at their school, and I just, I found it really, I just, it was so great to kind of see where they started and where they are now. The format that they use started from really an administrative-run program to now where teachers are leading, they're taking ownership of the process, and they're finding that it's very impactful on student learning. And also at Parker, I found it particularly poignant that it was noted that the introduction of Avid in our district, which we've all heard about, has accelerated the PLC work that they're doing. And so I just found that gratifying to know that other initiatives that we're, you know, providing and improving and, and working on are also helping the work that our teachers are doing in their collaborative effort. So it also was shared that the trainings, the live training events that were held at Parker and other trainings PLCs are not like a, okay, we get here and we're done, it's just constant, it's ever-evolving, we're always reevaluating and moving forward, so. Video, it was a great meeting. We also discussed later on, high school handbook course review, the process of, you know, maybe why some courses are removed, what some of those courses are. Many times, there are conflicts with certain classes, and, you know, kids just end up choosing one course over the next. We've also seen some trends that have changed in society. And one particular course that was brought up is newspaper, and that, I remember, you know, being a student at Craig, and that was really popular. Well, we all know that the newspaper industry has greatly changed, and of course, we're going to see that reflected in our high school as well, so that makes sense. And there's also just been an evolution, evolution of curriculum changes where we're going to phase out a class, an example of that would be Integrated Math Four. We're not, we're not like just removing math courses, but we have renamed and reconfigured, and so we just don't use that class, so we are removing that. I mean, sometimes just a number of students who are signing up for any number of reasons, could be a particular teacher is very charismatic, and then people are signing up for that class. And, you know, lots of different things factor into it, and I think it's just really good to hear those reasons and see the process so that we can understand why some courses are removed and different courses are brought in. I don't know if there's any questions on those items, but PPC just held our planning session for our next meeting. We had that on Monday of this week, and so we were planning some great things, we're always looking ahead. We have things pretty much kind of scheduling out for the rest of the year. Of course, we're always open to new suggestions, and if things come up that you'd like at our next PPC meeting, and thanks to everyone who's on that committee and supports it, I appreciate you.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you. And those changes in the high school handbook, because we'll get questions, and it's good to, like, there's different scenarios of what's causing these changes, and we, but we're hearing even, even in athletics, I mean, so I'd like to hear that the middle schools are talking to the high schools, and, and I think they're even kind of planning a little bit cross-school, you know, getting the kids ready and kind of preparing that way, so that is good work. Any other questions for Liz on PPC? All right, summary of future board requests? Or, and meeting times?
The Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting will be meeting on Tuesday, October seventeenth at four PM here at the Educational Services Center. The Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, six PM here at the ESC, and will include the budget hearing. And the PPC committee will meet on Monday, November sixth, at four thirty PM here at the Educational Services Center.
Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.